Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright. That concludes roll call.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is the City Manager's Report. Oh, I'm going to go here.
Next on our agenda is a City Manager's Report.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem, members of council, and members of the community. Quite a few things to talk to you about tonight, so I'll try to make it quick. But if you have any questions, please let me know. The first thing I wanted to mention is June is Ride Transit Month, and that's the Community Transit Choices Coalition, I believe is the name of the organization, but encouraging folks to ride transit where available. Also wanted to mention here on the record that the meeting for June 20th, several of us, myself included, will be attending remotely from the AWC, the Association of Washington Cities Conference in Spokane, and then cancellation of the July 3rd meeting. So we won't have anything on the agenda that evening, and that will be completely canceled. I did want to share with you that yesterday we started Passport Services here and have a few statistics that I wanted to share. We have gone live as of June 1. We have four applications scheduled for this week. And for the week of June 5th through the 9th, there's six appointments already, and we expect that to uptick as the word gets out a little bit more. The U.S. Department of State will update their website with our information this week. And we have set up a dedicated email address at passports@mltwa.gov for questions about the Passport Services. So we're really seeing an uptick. There's a lot of pinup demand for that service, I think. So we're ready to go on that. And the Dance Academy for the Spring Recital is about to start recruiting and getting ready to put that on. That's scheduled, I believe, for June 17th. So you'll see more information about that shortly. The call for artists for the art show in the fall is going to go out here shortly as well, and we'll hope to see some great recruitment for that, for that event, scheduled for sometime this fall. Unfortunately, we are going to have the pool closure here coming up in June 19th through the 27th. Just the pool will be closed. The building will be open. There are still people utilizing those other facilities, but there are several repairs that we need to make for tile in the pool area, repair the crack in the deck that we had mentioned, ensuring that there are no slip and fall accidents, doing what we can to ensure that won't happen. Repairing a light in the natorium? I don't know what that is. But apparently, there's a light in there, and it needs repaired. We also have to do some work on the air return unit and get that fixed. So for those days, the pool will be closed, but the building will remain open. What else do I have here? Met with cops and clergy this morning and talked to those folks a little bit about ways that maybe they could help us identify members of our community that are experiencing trouble before it gets into a crisis mode. And I think that, you know, we have the ability to help some of those folks, and we want to know who they are discreetly, of course, and just reach out and offer them assistance, if we can, before it gets to a crisis mode point. So I think that that group will be very helpful in that regard. And earlier this week, Sergeant Burkett, as I mentioned, retired after 34 years of service to the community, and we're very thankful for his service and his time here. Unfortunately, as you all know, our former police chief, Scott Smith, who was with the department from 1980 until 2008, passed away earlier this week. So wanted to acknowledge that. WASPIC, the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, also recognized that today. So just wanted to make sure the community was aware. He was a big part of the community for a long time. So wanted to make sure I mentioned that. And I think that's about it at this point. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Councilmember Sonmore?
I'll just say a brief comment about our former chief, Scott Smith. His wife, Julie, was on our city council, and I talked to her really briefly today, but there's an outpouring of love and support for their family. And so thank you for bringing that up.
Anyone else? Councilmember Roy Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. If this is a question for us as council or for the city manager, but I was wondering if there's any plans for memorial or city recognition of Chief Smith's service?
I know several members of our team here, Police Chief Call specifically is involved in that, and he will pass along information to me, and I'll make sure that you're all aware once I get that information, if and when it comes out. It depends on the family's wishes at this point.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. So next is the update from Gordon Thomas Honeywell is... Oh, there she is on Zoom. So Shelley, you're up.
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, you're a little... If you can up your volume a little bit.
Okay, how about I speak a little bit louder? Is that any better?
Yes, now.
Okay, great. Let me pull up my slides here, and I will get started. Hopefully, you can all see that. Well, good evening, Mayor and council. As was stated, I'm Shelley Holder, and I have the privilege of serving as the city's state government relations consultant. Since I was last with you all in November, there's a new face on council and new city staff, many of whom I had a chance to meet earlier this week. So it is good to be with you all this evening. Before I get started, I want to just note that there is a comprehensive report included in your council packet. That report has detailed budget summaries and descriptions of each bill that passed the legislature that has a nexus with an issue that the city has previously had interest in. It's a very lengthy written report, but I hope that you'll use that as a reference document moving forward. This evening, I'm going to provide an overview of the 2023 legislative session. I'll review the outcome of the city's legislative priorities, share highlights of additional legislative issues, and then we'll wrap up talking about next steps. So the 2023 legislative session was the first time the legislature has conducted their work in person in over two years. The public was still able to participate virtually through remote testimony at public hearings, but all legislators were back in Olympia. It was the first year of the biennium, so it was a long 105 consecutive days. And the primary objective of a long session is to adopt new biennial budgets, which the legislature did. In addition to adopting budgets, they considered over 2,100 bills and ultimately passed 485. And because this was the first year of the biennium, any bill that did not pass this year is automatically reintroduced next year. Democrats held strong majorities in both chambers, and they set the agenda in terms of which policies they wanted to prioritize. Following the last election cycle, there were over 20 new legislators. And so that meant that there were new committee assignments, new committee chairs, new caucus leadership, and all of that impacted what happened this session. So as I mentioned, the primary objective of the long session is to adopt budgets. And the state has three budgets. The operating budget funds all state agency operations, the largest of which is the K-12 education system. The 2325 state operating budget is $69.8 billion. Some noteworthy allocations include $20 million for grants to local governments for assistance in updating and implementing your comprehensive plans and then the development regulations. There's also $150 million to transition individuals living in encampments to housing. And there's over $250 million for various behavioral health services. The capital budget funds public and nonprofit construction projects that are non-transportation-related. It's a $9 billion budget, and it's primarily funded through the sale of bonds. There's $95 million in remaining bond capacity for a supplemental budget next year. The capital budget makes significant investments in housing and homelessness, behavioral health, and education. The third and final budget is the transportation budget. It's $13.5 billion, and it's the first biennium for implementation of the Move Ahead Washington package. Revenues that fund the transportation budget, which is primarily the gas tax, are continuing to decline. Heading into this past session, many communities were concerned because the governor's budget delayed funding for key projects. For the most part, the legislature was able to honor its previous commitments it made and provided phasing of funds for the next six years, so not just this upcoming two-year biennium, but also four years past that, so that there's predictability for planning purposes. This was also the first year to incorporate the Climate Commitment Act revenues, which are scattered throughout all three budgets. And that money is required to be spent on carbon-reducing programs and projects. So moving on to discuss the outcome of the city's top priorities. Mount Lake Terrace focused on a single priority for the 2023 session, securing additional funding for Phase 2 of the Main Street project. And to date, the city has been incredibly successful with securing steady support from the state, both for Phase 1 and for Phase 2. For Phase 1, the legislature allocated a total of $3.6 million via direct appropriations, which is a combination of three different awards over four years. Phase 1 also received a $2.4 million grant through the Transportation Improvement Board. Phase 2, so far, has received $2.45 million in direct appropriations, which is, again, three different awards over four years. And most recently, the city was awarded a $5 million grant from TIB. On the one hand, asking the state for support for a project they've previously invested in is helpful because there's precedent. And on the other hand, it can be challenging to go back and ask for more money when prior funds have not yet been used, particularly if we're talking about Phase 2. So at the time you all were considering what legislative priorities you wanted for the 2023 session, the Phase 2 total project cost is $23.2 million. And there were plans to submit a federal RACE grant application, which has now been done. But as a council, you had not yet decided to commit additional city funds to the project, and we didn't know the outcome of the now-awarded $5 million TIB grant. So based on what we knew at the time, we structured the city's legislative request to complete the minimum required match that was needed for the RACE grant, which was $2.19 million. So that was the request that we advanced in the 23 session. And we developed our strategy partially based on what has been most successful in the past and what our legislators thought would be most viable. All but one of our previous direct appropriations, which are a total of six, all but one have been through the capital budget. And that was the budget that our legislators thought would have the greatest opportunity. They did indicate that it was expected to be a really competitive capital budget year, but that that budget was going to be more likely than the transportation budget due to the ongoing structural deficits because of the declining gas tax. So with that in mind, we developed new messaging and supporting materials that highlighted the progress that you all have made with Phase 1, the components of Phase 2, and the coordinating benefits with the Transit Connections Corridor. We completed the House and the Senate capital budget request applications. We met with our state legislators before and during the legislative session, and we used every opportunity to promote the benefits of the Main Street project. Unfortunately, about halfway through the session, we learned that we were not going to be successful in securing funding through the capital budget. The lead capital budget writers in both chambers tossed out several projects that didn't align with the criteria that they were using for budget development. Primarily, they thought that the Main Street project was better suited to be funded by the transportation budget. Both Senator Solomon and Representative Ryu then took that feedback to their transportation budget writers, but they were told there were no resources for new projects since transportation budget writers were struggling to fund projects that had even previously been committed funding. I also reached out to the Chair of the House Transportation Committee to just ask what can Mount Lake Terrace be doing to be more successful with securing funding through the transportation budget if capital budget writers aren't wanting to fund it through that budget? And the feedback that I received is that he... In particular, the transportation budget is intentionally allocating more funding to competitive grant programs. And the hope is that more and more local governments would pursue grant opportunities. In this year specifically, the transportation budget was allocated... Or the transportation allocated an additional $68 million to the Transportation Improvement Board. So that's a significant increase in funding for that entity that the city has been successful in securing funds from previously. Overall, it is a disappointing outcome. But I guess it's not too surprising considering we knew heading into session that it was going to be a challenging capital budget year and that transportation revenues were continuing to decline. And quite frankly, our success in securing funding for the Main Street project has ebbed and flowed. One year, we get it; one year, we don't. Some years, we... Two years, we don't get it, and then two years in a row, we do. And so I don't think that it needs to be an indication of whether we will have success in the future or not. In addition to the city's top priorities, there were dozens of other policies advanced that impact city government. And I'm going to just briefly review highlights from three categories. There were, as I mentioned, dozens of bills, and there's much more detail included in that written report in your council packet. But for the category of public safety, there were two primary policies discussed. The first was police vehicular pursuits. And as many of you know, in 2021, the legislature passed a law requiring probable cause rather than reasonable suspicion to believe that the person in the vehicle had committed certain offenses before an officer could engage in a vehicle pursuit. This higher threshold has caused concern among some law enforcement agencies as they've experienced more people eluding or trying to get away from the police. Advocates of the reform were concerned that reverting back to the reasonable suspicion threshold would result in more dangerous pursuits. After some unique legislative maneuvers, Senate Bill 5352 passed the legislature. It lowers the evidentiary threshold for vehicular pursuits to reasonable suspicion for specific crimes. Notably, those crimes do not include property crimes. That was a major sticking point for some legislators who wanted to see the bill go farther. For others, the bill was a reversal of the progress that was made on police reform in the 2021 session. But ultimately, the bill passed because it had enough support from legislators who saw it as an important step, but perhaps not the final solution. The second topic on public safety is the Blake fix, and it's the reason that the legislature was called back to Olympia for a special session. The state's previous law on possession of controlled substances had a expiration date of June 30th. And that law was intentionally established as a temporary solution following the Supreme Court's ruling in early 2021 that drug possession was not a felony. So Senate Bill 5536 initially passed the Senate with bipartisan mix of votes and established possession as a gross misdemeanor. And it outlined the procedure for pretrial diversion and a pathway for vacation of conviction. When it got to the House, it was amended fairly substantially. It established possession as a misdemeanor and included use in public places, among many other changes. But because the bill passed both chambers in different versions, it didn't pass the legislature. So a committee was formed to create a compromise bill, and that was brought forward on the final day of session. Ultimately, it failed to receive sufficient votes to pass the House, and the regular session adjourned with no fix to that law. So the governor called for a special session to begin on May 16th, which is when legislators returned to Olympia and debated that compromise bill that had been negotiated between all four caucuses. The compromise establishes knowing possession as a gross misdemeanor and public use as a gross misdemeanor. Both are subject to a maximum of 180 days in jail and $1,000 fine for the first two offenses. If there is a third offense, the maximum number of days in jail is raised to 364, which is the standard limit for gross misdemeanors. This was part of the compromise. And after many impassioned floor speeches, making arguments for and against the merits of the legislation, it passed the legislature and was signed by the governor on the same day. The second category that I'll highlight is housing. And this was a really important priority for the legislature. There were hundreds of bills introduced on the topic of housing. A few noteworthy bills that passed include condominium liability reform, providing a SEPA exemption for residential infill development that's consistent with the comprehensive plan, providing cities with resources to improve permit processing. And perhaps the most discussed and longest-coming policy was on middle housing. The momentum for the middle housing bill has been building for years. And the legislature was motivated to reduce construction costs. One of the major cost drivers of new homes is the price of land. And so the concept behind building more units on the same footprint was appealing to lawmakers. There were easily 10 dozen different versions of this bill over the years. So it can be a little difficult to keep track of what was included in the final version that will be law. So I'll just start off by saying what this bill does not do. It does not allow for sky-rise development in single-family neighborhoods. And it does not prohibit the construction of single-family homes. It does establish a minimum number of units that must be authorized on all lots that are zoned primarily for residential. So for cities below 25,000 in population that are in the greater Puget Sound, the city must allow at least two units on all lots. An accessory dwelling unit, according to the legislation, is considered one unit, which means if a city already allows ADUs on all lots, then they already comply with that component of the bill. The version that passed the legislature was a compromise. It was the theme of this session. It was a compromise both on the part of housing advocates who wanted to see greater density authorized on all lots and on the part of many local governments who did not want their land use decisions to be preempted. On the... Or I guess the next item to mention on the topic of housing is there was $400 million in the capital budget allocated to the Housing Trust Fund. And that is, I think, the highest level of funding that's ever been allocated to that program. The final category I want to cover is infrastructure funding. The capital budget, again, allocated $400 million, same amount, to the Public Works Assistance Account. And the revenue that was previously being diverted from the Public Works Assistance Account into other accounts will now be restored moving forward. So not only is there historic investment in the account, there's also restored revenue for future uses of the account. The transportation budget allocates $54 million to the Safe Routes to School Grant Program and $51.9 million to the pedestrian bicycle safety program. Both of those grant programs fund projects that were previously identified during a competitive grant process. But I mention them because they are sources of funding that are being consistently and increasingly invested in by the legislature. Finally, as I mentioned earlier, the funding for the Transportation Improvement Board was increased by $68 million, resulting in a total appropriation of $287 million for TIB. So now that session is over. What comes next? Many of you have heard me say before that success during the legislative session begins now, during the interim months. So to start, I would just encourage the city to thank your legislators. And sorry, there's a little bit of echo. I wasn't sure if someone else was talking. In some ways, this was partially accomplished earlier this week with the Hall Creek Aquatic Restoration groundbreaking event. The city recognized the critical support from our state legislators in making that project a reality. And particularly in years when we didn't receive the funding we requested, it's important to follow up and connect with our legislators, thank them for their efforts, and brainstorm with them what we can do to be more effective in the future. Secondly, with all the bills the legislature passed, there's a lot of work to do, particularly for city staff who already have their plates full. There will be even more work for them in the coming months to ensure that the city is compliant with the various policies that were passed. And the work doesn't end with policy implementation. As I mentioned, there's increasingly more grant funding being available, and it's time-consuming to apply for that grant funding. And it takes persistence on behalf of city staff. But as the legislature makes more and more funding available via grant programs, it will be more important that we not only not leave funding on the table, but that we have the message to be able to take to our legislators to say, yes, we applied to that program. We were successful, or we weren't successful. But to have not even tried before going to the legislature and asking for funding is going to be difficult. And then lastly, it's never too soon to begin thinking about what our priorities should be for the 2024 session. And just as an anecdote, the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee met for the first time this morning. And they are the group that is going to be providing recommendations to the AWC board on how their priorities should be updated for the second year of the biennium. So if you have ideas or questions about what the city should be considering as a priority for next year, now is the time to start discussing that. In the fall, we will update the city's legislative agenda. Well, recognizing that it's... 2024 is not a budget year. It's a supplemental budget year. It's a short session. And so our priorities should reflect that. And so our priorities should reflect that. I think with that, I will stop sharing my screen and see if there are any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments? Oh, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, just a comment in the spirit of saying thank you. Want to make sure that we say thank you for the hard work that you have done. It was an honor to come down and actually see you see you in live time in your environment, Olympia. So it was very exciting. But although the outcomes aren't the ones that we probably were hoping for the best, we know that you were doing your darndest to make sure that these causes were moving forward. And we know we have another chance at that. So thank you for the work that you all have been doing and will continue to do for us.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Shelley, for for the review. And I think, you know, just, yeah, thank you for all of your work. And I don't have any questions this year, which I know I had lots last year. And I think that just is a testament to how much intentionality and time you spent, you know, kind of getting us prepared for session and keeping us updated during session. And so I'm just really grateful for that and appreciate all of your work to ensure there was alignment between, you know, kind of what what the council was thinking and the work that you were doing on our behalf in Olympia. So appreciate that very, very much.
Thank you. I don't see, Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll echo the thanks, Shelley. Good to have worked again sort of adjacent to you down in Olympia during session this year. But I guess the question I have to you in terms of sort of planning for the short session next year. There were a handful of bills. You mentioned the dozens or hundreds of housing related bills, housing land use sort of, and, you know, potentially preemptive bills that were probably near misses, I would I would characterize them as. You know, for any bills that might be, you know, likely for compromise and passage in in 2024 that sort of similar to to what we saw pass in terms of of land use preemption, would would welcome any comments on those. And, you know, if, you know, come summer or fall, as we're developing our agenda or or sort of working with our legislators around those priorities. I'm thinking in particular, the TOD bill, as it was called, you know, that is, if passed, is probably quite likely applicable to to our light rail zone and town center. I guess, you know, just putting at least doggy earring that page for for future conversation. So that's that's an open ended question. But if you want to respond, feel free. Otherwise, thanks for the good work and and your your presentation was spot on.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan, for that comment slash question. Yes, you hit the nail on the head in terms of the biggest near miss this session. It was the Transit Oriented Development Bill. I do expect that it will return next session. I'm actually going to be participating in a meeting in a few weeks here with Chair of the House Transportation Committee Jake Fai to talk about how cities can be coordinated and supportive of a TOD bill when it does return.
Well, thank you. I just want to just say that even though we didn't come out with any money, we do have a great delegation in the 32nd District. And they all showed up for a groundbreaking. So it's proof that that we have solidarity and community and everything going for us. So we'll work with them next year.
Yes, yes, I think them all showing up. And and the fact that you all held that event and invited them. And I think it was it was excellent and a demonstration of the fact that, yes, the state is a partner to the projects that the city is working on. And it's important to to celebrate the wins, especially in line of the times when we don't don't win in the way that we wanted.
All right, thank you. Anyone else before you go on? I don't see anyone else. So thank you very much, Shelley. Okay, so next on our agenda is the update on the Stormwater Program.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor of Chatham, Council, for putting up with my technical difficulties here at the beginning. Those of you who've been here for a while may remember that I every year I come and talk to you about the Stormwater Program. And this year I would like to focus not on what has been done in the past, but also but to kind of focus on what may be coming up in the future. This is the start of the Stormwater Comp Plan for next year, the 2024 Comp Plan. And I'd like to talk to you about what's coming up and get your feedback. First of all, I just want to say that there's four main objectives to the Stormwater Program. To repair and replace aging stormwater infrastructure, meet the city's regulatory requirements, which in this mean, this case, means this the ecology's stormwater permit for the city, protect water quality and reduce flooding. The permit with that the city has with ecology can further be broken down into four pieces. The largest piece is the education and involvement of the public in stormwater pollution prevention, finding and stopping pollutant spills, preventing polluted runoff from new and redevelopment, and doing no harm through city operations. Okay, so in this, this is a summary slide that kind of shows what has been done and what is coming up and which projects are not going to be done because we don't need to do them. So then in the first column, I'm pleased to say that we have relocated a 36 inch storm pipe under the police station, cleaned and retrofitted Taylor Pond, fixed a failed creek rockery on Hall Creek at 213th. We have finally found some solutions for flooding and identified fish passage problems on Hall Creek and have completed a Stormwater Management Action Plan for Hall Creek and Lake Ballinger, which is an ecology requirement, but also a good idea for us to find out what we need to prioritize and to get feedback from the community on what their priority is. For 2003, many of you were at the ground breaking for the Ballinger Park Hall Creek Restoration Project. The 52nd Avenue Storm and Road Upgrade Project is an aging infrastructure replacement project that is out to bid right now. And I will be coming back to you to let you know what the outcome of that bid process will be. That is approximately half a million dollar project. And finally, the decant facility retrofit, which is an extremely wanted project by the Public Works crews, is substantially complete. There is only a little bit of asphalt work to be completed this next week, and it will be done. In engineering and design, we have a tight lining project on 218th, which is adding a pipe where there should have been a pipe, but there isn't down a steep slope to remove sediment from getting into Hall Creek and into our stormwater infrastructure. And then also replacement for some broken storm pipes that are very deep in two places in the city. That engineering and design work is going to be done in house since we now have some more engineering skills and folks to do the work. So that's exciting. There are two projects that I came to talk to you about back in 2018 that were part of the the Capital Improvement Plan that have been proven to not be necessary. The retrofit of the Cedar Way Dam that we thought we needed to do, the ecology dam inspector came and actually determined that it was not necessary to do the project, so we can save that money. In addition, hydrologic analysis of the 66th Avenue West Stormwater Pipes, we hoped that we could route more flow to Taylor Pond. Unfortunately, Taylor Pond is extremely undersized, so that is not a project that we're going to move forward with. So we can save some money there to work on other projects that come up, of course, in the in the six year period. I'd like to highlight two key studies that are going to help drive the program forward and fuel the Comp Plan. The first is the Flooding and Fish Passage Study on Hall Creek. And the second is the Stormwater Action Plan for for Hall Creek and Lake Ballinger. These are helping us to identify what are the highest priority things to be working on for the next few years. I also wanted to share with you three projects that I think are highly significant. The first one is a water quality project that would be for cleaning flow off of 220th between I-5 and the Edmunds border. That road gets 35,000 cars a day. And it would, this would allow us to treat the flow off of that street and off of a lot of the commercial area. It would be done in the form of a media filled vault, which would be located close to Hall Creek. The approximate cost is 1.65 million for that project, but it is highly grant accessible. I think that project, we can get water quality funding for from ecology, and we would only have to provide the 25% match. The second project is to reduce upstream flooding at 216th. Many of you are probably aware that we have a recurrent flooding problem behind Primera at 68th. Cars get flooded. There's a business down there that can't operate because as frequently as once a year and sometimes multiple times a year, there's a foot or two feet of water on that road. We can fix this problem or at least reduce the frequency quite a lot. Where what we can do is to not raise the road, not put in a bypass, not do some of the other options that we had in front of us because those are very expensive and have permitting issues. We can remove a sheet piled dam that was installed in the 1980s above 220th, which is also a fish barrier, and take the take the sediment that has accumulated behind this dam. And this study that has been done has shown that we can do it without causing more downstream flooding. This, I think, is the best option, along with putting in gates to restrict traffic when we do have flooding up at 216th. The cost for this is approximately $800,000. I will do my darndest to get grant funding for it. It's more difficult to get grant funding for flooding projects than it is for water quality projects. And then the last project is just another extremely full stream of stormwater pond that has not been cleaned in many years, but could be cleaned and allowed and could provide water quality treatment for about a nine acre base, you know, area that's west of Safeway along 212th. The cost for this has not yet been determined. It's a much smaller project than Taylor Pond. I think it's going to be between 100 and 250,000. Okay, so I wanted to let you know what progress has been made on aging infrastructure repair and replacement for stormwater. Since the, you know, this Comp Plan was put together in 2018, we have cleaned and CCTV'd all the known problem areas identified in the Comp Plan. We've identified over 50 pipes that need maintenance and repair. All that maintenance and most of the pipe repair has been done by the city crews. There were three projects that I just mentioned earlier that were too deep or too complicated to be done by the crews. Those will go to design and then get done by contractors. We now also have a dedicated stormwater vector and camera van. And then Training for City Crew starts in June. I wanted it a lot earlier. We couldn't get this, we couldn't get the materials during COVID. It was very difficult to obtain this these particular vehicles. And in the future, the focus is really going to be on determining where a broken stormwater pipe is going to cause the most cost and the most inconvenience for people in the community, checking those pipes first to make sure that you're maintaining those pipes and then lining them where we where we can and replacing them where we can't. As you might imagine, replacing stormwater pipes by ripping up a road is really expensive. So as I've been thinking about the city, I've been thinking, what can we do instead? What can we do that's sort of a low cost kind of strategy that will enable us to forego additional stormwater infrastructure that we then have to maintain, clean, and replace down the line? I think the first thing I'd like to say is, really, don't be so quick to fill the ditches around the town. I mean, I get calls from people on a semi regular basis that want extra parking. They want to fill the ditch in front of their property. Completely understand why they'd want to do that. But a ditch gives you water quality, it's flow control, and it's easy to maintain. So it's a lot cheaper to have those, the infrastructure that we have rather than to start adding curb, gutter, pipe everywhere we want to develop. Infiltrating wherever possible, as much as possible, is not only something we're required to do by ecology as part of low impact development regulations, it also makes a ton of economic sense because the more we can infiltrate what we have coming at us, the less we have to build out and construct. So I think that this is something that needs to be even more in the forefront for new development. And the last one is with regard to street trees. You may see that there's a lot of stuff about trees that I've been working on lately. The reason is that trees are a great strategy. You can put them on the street. You can direct flow to them. They're great at absorbing wa, absorbing and soaking up stormwater. They intercept pollutants from the air. They provide shade. They make the city a greener and more pleasant place to live. They have a lot of benefits. They do require care early and late in their development, but they're pretty much self sustaining unlike the rest of stormwater facilities that we have around the city. So that's my plug for trees. I also just wanted to talk about outreach to the community, which I think maybe, you know, you've come across. And I think it's an extremely important part of the work that the Stormwater Program does. And that touches things like volunteer opportunities for adopt a drain, drain marking, youth environmental education at all of our summer festivals. And we also have a youth science event that's very popular and will be on the plaza this year. I want to get more input from people in the community about what's important to them. And part of that is having, you know, watershed discussions for things like the Action Plan. And I have a whole series of things about preserving the green infrastructure in the city, which, well, you know, we can discuss later. Some of the things on this tree that I created do not yet exist, but I would think that they could. So we'll see how that goes. And then last, I wanted to talk about source control inspections. This is where I'm going out to businesses and, you know, reviewing what's going on in their in their yards. I have found it to be really successful with people because I give them, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Laura, what's source control?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's
I know what source control is.
Sure. Source control means identifying potential pollutants that are outside and could be exposed to rain. It could get washed into storm drains. So thank you for that. This is an example of a steel fabricator who make that makes equipment for processing fish in the city. I went to them. I gave them a spill kit. And I talked to them about the fact that they have a lot of metals and metal dust that was kind of going right through their dumpsters, which had a hole in them into the storm drain. And, you know, we we talked about what they could do. Came back, they had completely designed steel lids for their dumpsters, which for a regular business would be the most expensive option, but for them was the least expensive. And I thought that was great, you know, it was really a good win for them. And I think they wanted to do the right thing, but they just didn't identify that this is something that could cause harm. And that's it for me. Do you have any questions, anybody?
Councilmember Sol Moore and then Payne Donovan.
I always like saying, hi, Laura. Three things. So we were at Primera today. And three of your projects, we talked about the flooding down there. They used to have a house and where they wanted to put the parking lot would always flood. And it sounds like three of your projects. Now, Taylor Pond is too small, you said, but there's a runoff that comes from that corner of Primera and the vacant lot that they've kind of preserved. So I guess that one kind of helps. But and then the 220th and 66, and then the Hall Creek 220th. And so that would kind of help maintain that property down there a little bit better. I know I was talking to them that I was walking through there not too long ago. And the the water gets pretty swelled up along their property. And so will that kind of help alleviate some of that, I think you said?
Is it, is it which, where is the
Oh, Primera Blue Cross.
Oh, behind on the on the 216th side?
Yes, yes.
That's exactly where the flooding would be alleviated by reducing the downstream obstruction. It's not going to completely solve the problem, but it it should alleviate the backwater effect that we're getting because this thing is four and four feet above the, you know, the downstream channel. So taking it out, removing the sediment should create much better flow.
Flow?
Yeah.
And then the the one on And then the one on 212th, I know that's really little, but would that help at all with the downwater that's going down onto 212th and flooding the street? I mean, that project, I think, should, they've put millions into it and it's just something that, do they ever talk to you about what's going on?
This is in Linwood?
Yes.
Oh, the flooding on 44th?
I know ours is up above, yeah. So that one, it probably helped a lot, but did they ever talk to you about?
No, I actually haven't, I haven't talked to them about them. I do talk to Linwood quite a bit, but
Oh, sure, but yeah.
But I haven't, they haven't approached me about that particular flooding problem. I don't think that this would actually affect that problem because of the topography in that area.
So high up and so small.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your good work. And I would love to have you come to Park and Rec and talk a little bit more about preserving the green future because they're very, very interested in it. I know you've been there before, but it would be nice to hear some of your plans as well, and I'm sure they're very interested.
Sure.
Okay.
Hi Laura, great presentation. It's great to hear about some inventive solutions and, I don't know, the child hydrologist in me enjoys these presentations, but I had another Linwood question and that relates to some of the construction, I think we've, that I've noticed sort of upstream, that Linwood has underway right now and wondering if any of the, any of those projects might, you know, help slow down some of the water when we get, you know, a lot of rain, et cetera. And then secondarily, you mentioned, you know, street trees and, you know, encouraging infiltration, et cetera. Just thinking of, you know, my dad lives in town and, you know, the type of sort of yard care and gardening he likes to do would, you know, he's often talked about like a swale that might, you know, potentially extend into the right of way on his street. So the grass parking strip in front of his house, you know, whether that's a street tree or something that might capture more, you know, stormwater in the sort of street, you know, it's a street without a sidewalk. Are there, you know, programs sort of that could be implemented in the future akin to a street tree program that would sort of set parameters for like swales in certain areas of the city that would, that would help encourage infiltration, et cetera? You know, I think you get where I'm going with that, but just wondering if that's feasible and how might someone, you know, go about achieving a project like that?
Well, let me answer the first question about Linwood first. I have been in ongoing negotiations with the city of Linwood about something specifically having to do with Hall Creek, which is phosphorus treatment. Phosphorus is one of the nutrients that drives some of the algae blooms we get in Lake Ballenger. Edmonds, Mount Lake Terrace, Shoreline all require phosphorus treatment for new construction in this basin, and I have been working to try to, you know, encourage Linwood to do the same. And I think that they are on board with this. That is a fairly easy and straightforward kind of change that they can make. It's just if a water quality treatment facility is required, it needs to be the kind with media that can treat phosphorus. Flow control is substantially more expensive. New construction and redevelopment needs to follow current ecology standards for flow control. So it's mostly the older, you know, undeveloped parcels that yield a lot of the flow that we have to deal with downstream. So there's that. With regard to street edge improvements, you know, there are some good examples in Seattle, of course, of, you know, natural drainage systems that have been put in. Those are quite expensive, and I think that they are put in in places where they would have the most cumulative impact and perhaps prevent combined sewer overflows in Seattle. So we don't have that much, as that much of a driver. However, I do work with Sohomish Conservation District on some of their ideas for rain gardens and things like that. I'd like them to come up with something that's really low-cost and really, you know, something that could be deployed a lot of different places. But so far, I don't have an easy answer for you on that one.
Okay, thank you. I'll look at the Conservation District.
Yeah.
Questions? Anyone else? No? No questions?
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next on our agenda is the review amendment four to the interim Public Works Director Professional Services Agreement. Who is that?
That's me.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. As you know, we have worked with Phil Williams for several months now. The council first approved a contract for his interim services in August of 2022, I believe, and then subsequently approved two amendments to that contract in 2022. Earlier this year in April, April 17th, the council approved amendment number three to increase the total not to exceed cost of 200,000. And as we were going through the recruitment process for a new public works director, we have concluded that process and appointed a new public works director, and Phil Williams has gone back to retirement. So I can definitively say this will be the last amendment to this contract that you will see. But at the moment, we are looking at requesting an increase of $20,000 to that contract for a total not to exceed of 220,000. And that will conclude Phil's services here for the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And we do appreciate him. He did a lot of work here and he did very well, and he was a trusted resource for quite a few people, including me, when I first came on board. So that's what I have. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions? Comments? Councilmember Salmore?
So he's retired. This is just funds that we already owe him that we didn't budget in. We stopped at 200,000 and now we just have to go possibly up to, well, I guess it would have to be another $20,000 more because he is no longer here, so you would know his contract.
Yeah. And this does give a little bit of room. We didn't hit the exact number because we didn't know what that was going to be when we put this together, but this will cover anything else that happens to come in.
Mayor Protem, well?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, I missed his retirement party yesterday, so I'm going to want to say on the record how much we appreciated Phil's work. You know, he came in and fixed a ship that was facing some challenges, and he did a great job. And it was expensive to bring him in to do it, but he did a phenomenal job and was worth every penny that we invested in him. And so I just want to make sure that he knows how much we appreciate the work that he did and looking forward to handing that off and to Jesse and making sure that, he's been given an opportunity to carry forward what Phil put in place and did a great job. So anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda is the review recommendation, is the review recommendations for the remainder of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. And that again is our city manager.
Thank you again, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. So we brought this to you relatively quickly, and the reason we brought it to you relatively quickly is a little bit of panic last week, to be honest. We heard from several different sources that the debt ceiling negotiations currently, well, I think concluded at this point, but at the time currently ongoing in Washington, DC, contained a provision that would claw back any unobligated ARPA funding. We have at the moment 2,032,000 and several hundred dollars that remain unobligated, and that number is going to fluctuate a little bit. We have some monies that are coming back to us. Our new public works director saved us a significant amount of money on the asphalt truck, 60,000 at this point over, or excuse me, under what council budgeted of the 215,000 that council obligated from ARPA. So there'll be some money coming back, and these numbers are going to fluctuate. But that's what prompted this discussion is the potential that the federal government would take back the money that we haven't used yet. So we put together this list, I did, based on looking at the information that the council reviewed earlier with Mr. Knightz when he was here, and looking at department head requests as part of that obligation, and looking at the community's priorities from the survey that the city did in 2021, I believe. So those two top recommendations or requests from the community as part of that survey was infrastructure funding and community support, support for various community organizations. That's what formed the basis of this recommendation. Several things I looked at, and you have them here in the memorandum that I provided to you, but we have an opportunity, a one-time opportunity really, to repair and do some major infrastructure improvements. One of those, the biggest cost in there is the library roof and the HVAC system. I know from talking to several city staff members that that's been kind of on the list and needed to be done for several years and has always kind of fallen below the line, the funding line during budget time. So wanted to be able to do that now, and it's not something that we'll have to worry about again for hopefully 20 years or so, which is a significant investment in our community. Couple of the other things, focus on our parks. We, again, we're all at Ballenger Creek, or Hall Creek, excuse me, groundbreaking earlier this week, and I know that parks is a very high priority in this community. Terrace Creek Park is a highlight, and it's something that's well-used and well-loved. So the design for that, it's another big ticket item, but it's something that we wanted to focus on, or at least I wanted to recommend to be focused on. And then there are other smaller projects, but still impactful. One of the big items was funding for the kind of regional facility that the Volunteers of America does. I know several of our partner cities have invested in that, and with the funding that's available now, we can make a significant investment in a facility that I think our citizens will use. That formed the basis of my recommendation. I know that there are other projects that council has talked about in the past. The impending, well, just to be blunt, the impending doom that I felt last week has kind of dissipated a little bit because that debt ceiling negotiation has concluded. There are still several members of Congress that are talking about clawing back those unobligated funds, but what I'd like to do in my recommendation to you is to discuss this tonight, make sure I'm on the right track, and then we'd like to bring this back to you, not on Monday as we initially anticipated, but as part of the supplemental budget in July, which will then obligate those funds insofar as we understand the Department of the Treasury's recommendations or guidelines on how those funds will be obligated. But once they're budgeted, at this point, we feel that they're safe, that they cannot be clawed back. Now, the fail-safe way to do that is to enter into contracts with service providers who are going to provide these services. But at this point, we feel that just budgeting those funds as part of the supplemental that you'll see in July will protect them. So I'm happy to hear your conversations and answer any questions if you have any.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the overview and I appreciate the intentionality and ensuring that if there were concerns here, that we do obligate those funds in a way that ensures that they stay within our community versus being clawed back. So thank you for all of your quick work to move this forward, and I appreciate kind of the resetting as we have kind of some of that fear has passed of kind of going, okay, now that, you know, we've got a little bit of time to continue this conversation, you know, laying out that that's the plan and the path forward. I guess my question, just to start off before we get into like the conversation, is just, you talked about some of the data points that kind of went into some of these recommendations, you know, conversations that were had last year, you know, leadership at the city's kind of thoughts around priorities. I think one of the things I didn't hear, that we had a fairly significant conversation at our retreat around kind of what each of us as council members had thought around priorities, and so I guess I would love to hear whether that was part of this or given kind of the timeframe, maybe if that wasn't part of this, because I guess we have had lots of conversation, but we had a fairly intentional one pretty recently where we shared some of our thoughts, and I would love to ensure that we aren't, like, that was a good conversation, and I guess I would love to make sure that's included before we get too deep into revisiting some of the conversation. So I guess I'd love to understand that.
Yeah, and absolutely, I did pay attention to the comments that were made at the retreat. Took a look at the notes that were provided to all of you kind of as a background, what that discussion surrounded. And what I kept coming back to was infrastructure needs, community support. That's, those are the two things that I kept coming back to that seemed to me to rise to the top of the priority list. Specific projects I didn't delve into too much, it was just those two broad themes is kind of breaking down the funding into those two silos, if you will.
Thank you. Councilmember Salmore?
I just have a question that's kind of come up lately, is first of all, Sound Transit not allowing or not allowing the public to use a facility, a public restroom, when the light rail comes? And we're going to have over 5,000 people a day using it. And so I see restrooms for Terrace Creek Park, and I know they've always had Santa Cans there, and I've visited Bicentennial Park quite a bit, and now there's a new Santa Can there. And I know that's an upcoming thing to have restrooms in parks. And I see Terrace Creek with the $500,000. I'm wondering if there could be a restroom put in Veterans Park or something that would allow travelers with Sound Transit to use a restroom somewhere in a facility, unless we're going to make sure there's Santa Cans down there. But Light Rail said they did not want to have restrooms because they did not want to mess with people trying to do drugs in there. Instead, the cities are going to have to deal with that, especially our city. So I'm just wondering if we have any plans or if the staff's talked about how we're going to accommodate travelers on light rails by using restrooms. So I'm wondering, instead of having Terrace Park, if it could be possibly in Veterans Park? Because I'm sure with 5,000 people, I'm, and I don't mean this to sound tacky, where do they go? You know, and so is there a local business at some point that will come in and maybe they'll use the coffee shop? But I think it's pretty important to have a restroom by the light rail. And then with that being said, do we know it's 750,000, is that what's already been quoted? Because I think I've seen that price tag for a while now. Is that capped at 750, I mean, is that base rates?
Yeah. If council wanted to move forward in that direction, that's the budget number we would use. I don't think we've had a recent quote. I find it hard to imagine that it would be more than that, but prices of everything have gone up, so.
I just, it's appalling to me, 750,000. It's just horrible, but like you said, you know, everybody's been talking about, it's been on the list for a long time, and I don't know when we're ever going to come up with that much money again to do some roofing for that. I don't know about flooring and cubicles. I know we talked a little bit about that with the police, but I'm like, Erin, I know we had some specific asks, and so it's hard to kind of look at this and then put ours in there, you know? I know St. Pius came to us and was asking for some funding as well, and it's those little projects. But I do know, I don't take this money lightly at all. I know it's a gift. I know the debt ceiling, it was a touch and go there for a little bit. And, but the one thing is, is trying to accommodate all of our citizens with the best of what we can give them and let them know that we're looking out for everybody in our community and thank your staff for getting the truck lower. That's wonderful news because that's funding, and I'm sure, I know when I used to get, work at the college, we would get a budget, and if you didn't use it, you lost it, and you had to, and so it's kind of hard to take that money. to take that money away from them, but please let them know we're going to put that savings to good use. But if that's something possible with what Aaron was saying, is to kind of look at our list again, too. I don't have my notes with me, and so I couldn't remember either. I mean, this looks like a great list, but I know there's things that we had talked about that are probably not on here, but.
Of course.
Thank you for bringing this back.
Yeah, of course, and I will, I will admit to putting this together extremely quickly because of the fear of losing it, but I can go back through in detail. And I'll do that before, I believe at this point, our budget amendments were, are set for July 6, I believe is the work session, the study session, and then the, the following council meeting is when the ordinance would come before you. So I can, can go back and look at that. It was, it was a scramble. I'm, I didn't want to be in the seat when we gave back $2 million.
Exactly, yes, yes, I do appreciate it. Y'all.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to just comment on the almost nightmare last week, which is, it's going to sound weird coming from a guy with a PhD, but there's perhaps something to be said about being too thoughtful and too methodical. We have been at this forever, because I feel like we just don't want to make a decision because we don't want to upset anyone, or we don't want to lose anyone, and in doing that, $2.4 million was almost removed from our decision-making, which is just my way of saying, I hope that we can at least make some decisions, because I thought I heard you just say, we're going to talk about this, and then we're going to bring it back to you again, which if anybody can tell me how many times we've heard "again" when it comes to this specific decision or set of decisions, you know, take you to dinner, because it's got to be in the 10 to 12 at this point, feels like. That said, I'm surprised, after almost feels like two years of talking about this, there's things on here I have no idea what they mean. Case in point, I would love to hear what civic campus development means when it's half a million dollars. As the community college guy, it's a little ironic to say I do not know what that 150 is. I like how it sounds. I know I used to push, when we had the first set of monies, CARES Act, for us to put some money towards educating our folks so they don't find themselves right back in a situation. Didn't get any traction. So I'm curious how this one got $150,000 worth of traction, even though I like the idea. And then, you know, we were starting to work our way through some of these, but I think that they've been spoken around a lot, so I think there's elements of what they look familiar to me as, but I would agree, a lot of stuff has fallen off the list that I'd be concerned with. Case in point, we also had the Foundation for Edmond School District come and make a request to offer an opportunity for us to consider, and we said, oh yeah, we'll, we'll get back to you. And we did not get back to that person, and we're theoretically making decisions tonight. So I also want to make sure that we didn't lose sight of anybody else who has spoken to us or wanted to speak to us.
Sure. So a couple, couple things there. The workforce training, the partnering with community colleges, I think that is looking strategically out 10 to 15 years with this changing economy and making sure that our residents have the, the background in order to perform these new jobs. I think it's a, not necessarily an investment for next year, even five years from now, but it's an investment for 10 or 15 years from now, to make sure that folks here can participate in that new economy. That was a strategic, long-term investment, in my mind, for members of the community. The other civic campus development or redevelopment, a lot of that is for the fountain, and there's still several punch list items as part of this building that need to be completed, and there was also the agreement with Allied that is a part of that as well.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, Jeff, thank you for putting this together and bringing it back to us again. But it is, yeah, it was, it was a, a quick scramble that we were frightened of last week when, when we were in DC, and, and we knew we needed to jump into action, and appreciate you jumping into action, making that happen, and bringing it before us tonight. You know, there's, there's a lot of projects on here that we've talked about, that have been in, you know, in the plans, or we know that it is, it needs to be done. I, I, I think there are probably some more glamorous things we could be doing. There are certainly some other dreams that I've shared that I'd like to be doing, but I'm not sure that they're fully cooked yet, and, and, and we need to move forward. But more importantly, these are things that we know we need to do, and, and have been on the list for too long. This is an opportunity to, to take care of them, get them off the list. They are community priorities and have been community priorities for a long time. And so getting, for instance, the workforce training, that was one of the things I was, I've been interested in for a long time, talking about. I, I would also like us to be doing some small business incubator programs, but that's something that I think we're not quite there yet, and we need to spend a little more time thinking about and talking about and investing in in the future. We just won't have the ARPA funds available to do it. We'll find, have to find something else, like economic development revenue that's coming in and funding more services here in the city. The, the library roof and HVAC obviously needs to be done, we need to take care of that. The, you know, VOA, I'm not sure the navigation's the right word for that, but I think the, investment into that program is, is a wise investment. I think there are other programs that are also good ideas that have, also came before us, that, I mean, I love, I love all the different programs. I mean, Edmond School District, Washington Family Kids, or Kids in Washington, Kids, Kids, yeah. Great program. St. Pius has a great program. I think there's a lot of great programs out there, and it is difficult to figure out, you know, and, and how do you pick and choose which ones are the best or the right fit for our community. But I think VOA is, is a good choice. We've been partners with them, they've done a great job, they've got a great program that's coming in to the Linwood Center, the Linwood Neighborhood Center. Another thing that we've talked about that I'd like to see us explore, and again, maybe it's just, we're just not ready to go there, but, you know, when we talk about taking care of the community and helping those in need, is working with not only the COPS and Clergy Program, but also VOA, potentially the School District, and others, and identifying, using other tools, resources, and programs, organizations to identify, as you were talking about with the COPS and Clergy Program. It's not just, you know, those in the faith-based community, but it's, you know, families, kids, in schools, it's those that are, you know, out on their own, struggling in life, that don't have anywhere to turn, or haven't. And so we need to be able to try and identify all of those folks. And COPS and Clergy is a great program, and using the faith-based community to, to do that is fantastic, but we need to do more. There are others we need to be able to identify, and, and I'd love to figure out how to do that. Again, maybe that's just not fully cooked, and that's why we can't put it in here at this time, but that is something I think is important for us to explore in the future. Anyway, and, you know, again, I think there's a lot of things that we've talked about that I'd really like us to be doing, but maybe they just aren't ready, but these are. These are, these are projects that are ready and need to be done, and recognizing the, we had to do it quick, now we have a little more breathing room, but I think Councilmember Woodard is right. I mean, we've been talking about this for two years. It's time to make some decisions, it's time to get this done and move forward. So, thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I think in the spirit of getting to a place where we could make some decisions, at least what would be helpful for me, I appreciate, I think there was general consensus around the, about the buckets, and I think to, to Mayor Protam Wall's point, I think where in those buckets we ultimately invest our funds, they are hard decisions, and there are going to be, I think, hard conversations and hard, hard decisions where we are looking at multiple very worthy investments, and, and ultimately having to prioritize what we feel is the most impactful way to invest, you know, the limited funds that we have. And so I think what would be helpful, at least from my perspective, is kind of bucketing some of these projects and really understand, like, where are the, like, if we want to invest a certain amount in infrastructure, a certain amount in public, you know, kind of services and support, like, what are our options in those buckets so that we can have that conversation around, like, what do we feel is the investment that is most critical at this moment in time for us to make, based on what we know about our, our community and our community's needs? So I don't, I guess as we kind of think about, how do we get to that decision? Because I appreciate the things that are laid out here, and again, I think every single one of the things on this list has a very, I think, you know, a reason why we would want to support it, right? And I think, to the conversation, there's a lot of things that are not on this list, and I think many of them, which probably could be ready to move forward with, that I would like to make sure that we are at least having the conversation around, you know, what, where we want to, where we want to ultimately land on some of these investments. So I guess for me, that would be really helpful, is kind of gathering, we've talked about lots of different things, gathering them together and going, here's approximate costs involved with each, like, where, where do we want to have those funds land so that we can get those decisions made and get the funds allocated?
Sure. So just to make sure that I'm, I'm on the same page, we have an infrastructure category, and then a recommended percentage of what's left over for that category, and then projects underneath it?
That's kind of, yeah, what I was thinking, because there's definitely, there's things on there, but then there's things that aren't on there, right? So is Terrace Creek, I mean, and I would put, I mean, that's kind of parks, but I would say kind of infrastructure as well. So I guess I will leave that to you guys to figure out those bits, but, I mean, we've talked about other things. We've talked about, you know, the clubhouse down at Lake Ballenger, we've talked about roads, we've talked about, you know, pedestrian and, and bicycle safety, like, I mean, we've talked about all sorts of different projects, again, all very worthy projects, but I think having those kind of grouped together in a way that we can go, okay, given this amount of funds, like, where, where are we going to invest? I think that would be a really helpful way for us to whittle down and get to some decisions.
Yeah, and just a little more clarity on how this list was put together. Some of the things that you mentioned, like the bicycle and pedestrian safety, definitely considered. The reason I didn't add that to the list is the capacity of our engineering department to produce the work and the time necessary. So those kind of decisions, that's kind of how I, we got here. But as I mentioned, we do have a little bit more breathing room. So in July, I think is when we'll make that recommendation, but I would recommend, and I think a couple of council members have said the same thing, allocating these funds so we can move on to other items, other pressing matters for the council. And I would recommend that happen in, in July, if at all possible. That way, they're budgeted, they're allocated, you don't have to worry about it anymore.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, City Manager. That seems very reasonable. I wanted to, sorry, I left my glasses in the car, so every time I lean in, I'm like, I lose my line of argumentation. I'm okay back here, though. I wouldn't, I'd rock them. Nonetheless, help me think through, and if this helps other people even better, the Terrace Creek Park planning and restroom. Now, I'm going to probably say a lot of words, we'll just pick them apart as they go. Let's just keep it simple, half a million dollars. Here's the first segue, pause. When we were at Primera, they made a funny joke about how their permits to create the beautiful facility added a whole lot of money into our coffers, so I'm kind of keeping that in mind. Terrace Creek Park would be the benefact, benefactor of any impact fees of new development. Is that fair to say, or is that too simplistic on my part?
So new development pays park impact fees, it's true. That pays for capital, that's true, but they also pay for transportation impact fees and other GFCs. So that, that piece of it could apply to any number of other infrastructure projects, depending on, you know, what category they fall into, whether it's roads, or, you know, pedestrian paths, or bicycle safety, or that kind of thing.
Perfect. So it tells me I've been paying attention for the last four and a half years. That said, what's different in the last four years is I would say we're right on the precipice, I just like using big words, of perhaps some really significant growth, correct? We have Rogers now about to make a move, which I presume will be new fees and all that, because they've been sitting idle. We have the project that is right off of the light rail, if you come underneath that soon-to-be-beautiful underpass, that has not paid any fees yet, that will start. Okay, so all that's saying that that's got a potential revenue for our parks. I'm wondering, just to cut to the chase, if we could reduce that 526, just so we can get them started in anticipation of routing some of the monies from the impact fees, and I'm sure there's a whole bunch of others. I mean, next to the 7-Eleven, if you haven't been there, there's no longer a hill over there. It's unbelievable. Haven't seen that for 20 years, and now see what you can do over there, yet it's been sitting there waiting all this time. But I presume that's impact fees coming in as well. So again, just to, looking at creating some space for some of these wonderful projects that you've talked about, because as I've done the math, this is mapped out, which means we put anything else on those buckets underneath, someone's got to come off or reduced. So I'm just looking at, what can we reduce and still be meaningful? And I'm wondering, since Parks has a, technically a revenue stream, and we're almost there, if that number couldn't come down, and what that number would look like just to get them moving forward, because I do think we need a restroom over there.
Yeah, just for design, and we can do that. And this number will change a little bit. I mentioned the $60,000 that our new Public Works Director saved for us, that number will be added back in. So the, the balance will change, but when you see this again on July 7th, 6th, in July. So the number will change, but I can certainly take a look and see what the Terrace Creek Park just design, design level would cost, and that would be different than this number. And we can factor that in as well.
So to, just to clarify, the VOA navigation is the Neighborhood Center?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I was looking for it.
Yeah.
But the 250 is the one that gave me the clue.
Yeah.
All right. Well, all of these capital projects that, that we've been talking about for all these years, we finally have the money to do something. I'd like to see it get done, especially the, the poor library that's been waiting for how many years now? So.
The other part to me, putting this together, is making sure we only use this money on one-time costs, not for anything ongoing, because then when it runs out, we'll have to find money to support whatever that ongoing program is, and it's kind of like a, you know, shuffle game. So focusing just on those one-time projects, capital projects, I think was an important component of this as well.
Is the civic campus development for 500, is that going to actually cover the other?
Yeah, we think so, and there's a little bit of contingency in there, just in case, because until the punch list items are done and we get everything signed off and ready to go, we won't know the exact number of what that'll cost, but this should cover it with a little bit left over.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. I guess I'd be curious, given we had our legislative update today, and we, we heard about kind of our limited, you know, ability to, to gain some additional funding for our Main Street Phase 2, which we have identified as one of our major projects and goals as a community, and I think, you know, continuing to kind of think through, like, how, what are the investments we can make in ourselves that will pay dividends and return investments, you know, above and beyond what we're making as we look kind of forward into the future, so that we can invest in the things that we want to on a more ongoing basis? I guess, like, is that something that there's been conversation around, or is that something that we can ask that you include in kind of thinking through, like, what, what do we need to invest in ourselves for Main Street Phase 2, given where we are at currently, and knowing that there may not be legislative funds coming in the next couple of years, and given our desire to move that project forward and get it over the finish line, are there things that we should be thinking about in terms of these funds for that project as well? That would be really helpful to understand.
Yeah, so where I was previously, before coming here, we allocated almost all of our ARPA dollars to infrastructure projects that will support growth. In this case, the legislative ask was 2.19 million. That would, what you have here would fund that ask, but there is nothing else. The other part of that is, it's a bit of a risk, because we can obligate it by 2024, 2026, if we don't spend it by 2026, it's gone. We don't know, we can be hopeful, but we can't be certain that we'll get the other funding components that will allow us to complete that project in 2026, or at least spend this part of the money to support that further project. That's the only thing I would be hesitant about with that, but we can certainly take a look at that and see how we might complete those projects, maybe the infrastructure, I'm sorry, the design, some right-of-way acquisitions so we can expend these dollars. But I'd have to break down that project to get, kind of move pieces around to get to that 2.19 ask.
I think that would be really helpful, and I would be interested in seeing those numbers.
Okay.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it's a timely conversation, because about 10 minutes ago, the Senate passed the, the debt limit deal. debt limit deal. But, you know, I'll play the newbie card and back up Councilmember Murray and sort of, you know, asking for some of the, you know, expressing my appreciation for sort of more contextual sort of budget details that she's spoken to and others have mentioned. I do, do think some of these big, big dollar, you know, one-time costs are, you know, really make sense to, you know, check off our list and, you know, they're certainly all valuable and, you know, probably very appreciated community amenities that we will be, you know, funding. So I think most of what I've been thinking has already been said, so I'll stop there. But would definitely appreciate the contextual sort of big picture or, you know, where in the big budget picture, you know, this spending might sort of alleviate pressure and anything else that will help our thinking. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
Testing, one, two, three. For our city manager, it, it sounds like we've really honed in on infrastructure and we need to get the money spent by 2026. All right. So we'd want to work on things that are for sure we need, which is pretty big. What do you need for specifics? Anything for this extra money? Any specific projects? Because we're still talking kind of generalities. The only thing I've heard specific is the library, which has to be taken care of. And we talked about restrooms. So is there anything else specific we need to let you know about or you want to know about?
I think, I think I've got good direction to separate the buckets. So we have the infrastructure and then the community supports. And then if we can settle on a percentage for each bucket, I think that will help council narrow down their decision-making. And then what we can do is list those projects that council has talked about previously and some that we mentioned tonight and basically put a red line on each one of those buckets and say below the line, above the line. I'm a little hesitant to bring forward each project, each potential project, only because I think that's kind of what has led to the several years of debate at this point. And I'm hesitant to put you all in that position, which is why I made these recommendations tonight, along with the driving factors that are or that were the potential for losing it all. But I think if there are any specific projects that haven't been talked about, that I don't have background on, that weren't presented to you in the spreadsheets before that you think should be considered, yeah, let me know what those are and I'll make sure that they're in at least one of those two, unless, you know, it's something that's not infrastructure or community support them. I think they're, they'd kind of be outside those two focus areas for council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I was sitting on the fence on whether or not to bring this up, and I'm going to bring it up because here I am. So 398 is coming back from Volunteers of America. That was the half a million that we put in to serve our residents who were having a hard time covering their bills and 100,000 plus of that was spent. So very happy for those residents who were able to benefit from that. That said, that money has already been allocated, which you can see it says we will receive it back, meaning that it has been spent, which is just my way to pause and say, when VOA came, they requested half a million dollars to move forward with this project. And at that time, which was several months ago, that wasn't going to change the needle or move the needle, as they say, as far as you would hope. Since then, we have had a lot of ground made up. And what I'm trying to let you know is that Mount Lake Terrace sits in an interesting situation. If we were to leave that 398 in VOA's coffers and say, we've allocated it, it's always had your name on there from day one, so no one necessarily remembers why we even gave it to you, because it's always said VOA, they would break ground pretty much tomorrow. If you dropped it to the $400,000, they would still break ground on Monday. So that's just my way of saying, everybody, when it comes to capital project, wants to be the last one in because that's who gets all the credit. No one remembers all those other people who donated and all those other processes. They remember the last person. Mount Lake Terrace would put this project into move forward status. There's still money to be raised, do not get me wrong. So this isn't a guilt trip. We missed the opportunity, you missed the opportunity. But I do want to put it out there that from what I have been hearing in this conversation, this is about unallocated money and we're actually bringing money back towards us to then perhaps send it back out. But I'm just suggesting that in the sense of making it a true impact, I think the resources that are coming through this building are going to meet all kinds of needs. Their early childhood education on that first floor has more than doubled in size. We know childcare is huge for our residents. And the behavioral health partnerships that are being fostered right now also meet what we've heard again from day one from the county road show that was here in this very building that set the stage across to surveying our own residents, behavioral health, behavioral health, behavioral health. Those two come very clearly in here, and then the proxemics of it speaks for itself, I suppose. So just wanted to put that in front of us to make sure that, we at least said it, I think 250 is very generous. The Linwood City Council has put in the six-figure level. Edmund City Council has put in the low figure, six-figure, but have also breached it. So you're right in that sweet spot. I don't think anybody who poos that $250,000, there's nothing to be, shake a stick at. It's a wonderful investment. But just want to be clear, without having to do anything other than tell them, reallocate that money how you deem it best, we would be done with that decision and then we'd be back, still with the 2.1, I think, to deal with. But just putting that in front of us, that you would, you would definitely be moving the needle, is what I would say. Which the 250 will as well, but somebody else is going to come right behind you and take your credit, our credits.
I thought it was fully funded. That's what I heard.
So St. Pius, who I would love to be able to have a public comment before we wrap this conversation up or at least address whatever public comment they have to say, will tell you that every day you wait, that number is growing. So we were close and then it got changed by the economy, if you will, all this discussion. So you're sitting right there.
Okay. Do you have?
I think I have pretty good direction. Hopefully bring back a fully baked memo for you on, in early July.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we can move on? Next on our agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
I'm here from Mercy House St. Passway.
Oh, she's, she'll call your name. No, 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 you're, you're going to the right place. It's just that we have to recognize you first.
We do have one public comment from the audience. This is Dawn Osborne. If you'd please state your name again and your address and you have.
My name's Dawn Osborne.
Two minutes.
Oh, I'm saying. My name is Dawn Osborne. I'm here on behalf of St. Pius the 10th and Mercy House. I appeared before you back in October and since then, we've had a couple of new city managers. So welcome and council members and mayor. What I want to point out is I see the funds here for the VOA. And again, that's a project that's being housed in, in Linwood. We have a project that does a similar function right here in Mount Lake Terrace. You're all aware of it because I was here, made a presentation and you asked questions for 45 minutes. So it's something that's very well supported and understood. And I use the term investment when I talk about this because it is. This is a self-supporting project. We need the final funds to complete the construction. This project is almost completed. It's not breaking ground, it's almost completed. If you've gone by there, the parking lot is in, we're just looking at doing maybe some landscaping. And when I say investment, some of the things you touch on here are support for the public. And this is a tremendous one that touches on all of these. It's a combination of a navigator, as we walk in the front door, the first office on the right is our navigator, which helps people that come in who have needs. We have St. Vincent de Paul, who will be there if somebody finds himself critically in need of food, they will hand them an egg with three days' worth of food and then follow through with them to find more sustained food to support their family. You have somebody who needs, finds himself in abused situation and they don't have a place to stay. St. Vincent de Paul will step up and provide them with a motel for the night and then help them find longer-term housing. We have, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Catholic Housing Services Rapid Rehousing Program? If you find somebody who is out on the street or just recently found themselves on the street, they will assist with the deposit, the first month's rent, the last month's rent, and then wean the person off from paying full rent down to paying a portion of it. So they make people self-supportive. And these are all programs that'll be housed right here in Mount Lake Terrace. They don't have to call somebody up in Everett, they don't have to go over to Linwood to get assistance. It's right here, right across from the Evergreen Playfield. That $250,000 is the same amount that we requested back in October. We ended up having to get a line of credit to make good on our obligations to our contractor so that they could complete this project. Would love to have you come down and take a tour of the facility. It really is something that Mount Lake Terrace can be very proud of. Again, we have another project to help immigrant mothers and young families who have children up through the age of five years of age. They will have a store there where people can come in, they can get baby food, they can get diapers, they can get clothing up to five years of age. Support for the mothers. This truly is about keeping people from going homeless rather than trying to get people off the street after the fact. And this is something, again, that, as Councilman Woodard said, the last money in gets all the, all the accolades. But it's something more importantly that will support itself for years to come. All these projects that you have, the infrastructure, not saying that they're not worthy, they are absolutely worthy and they're necessary, but that's money that's spent and it's gone, it's done. This is something that will bring you a return year after year after year, literally for generations. St. Pius donated the land, they donated the building, and we spent about a little over $800,000 renovating this building. We would love to have gone to 1.4 million, but the city had regulations, we weren't allowed to do that.
Your two minutes is up.
I'll be available if anybody has questions. I can return on Monday, I think is your next meeting? Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
If anyone in the online audience would like to speak, please use the hand raise tool. And there is somebody. Cassandra, yes, you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Cassandra Dom. I just want to say thank you for all the hard work. I know you guys meet a couple times a month and that's a lot of time and dedication you put to making Mount Lake Terrace better, and I appreciate that. Just a couple comments. Thank you for pushing the interim Public Works Director. I had been able to listen to those previous meetings where you had approved them amendments. And it is nice having somebody that was doing a great job stay on, but it is important to hire and have full-time staff and continue that transition to that new person. The last thing I would say is thank you so much for doing the due diligence and making sure we can use these resources and these funds. The last thing I would say is just make a push for using the funds to things that are usable, you know, splash pads, roofs for the library, safety for the library, Mount Lake Terrace resources, permits, stoplights for turning out of the library onto that busy main street. Those are things that the residents can use. And also I know there was some funding for the Mount Lake Terrace Recreation Pavilion, but as a resident, I still can't get my daughter into swim classes. So it's things like that, that as a resident, we know and need and that we would like to be able to utilize and not go to other cities. But again, just thank you so much for all your work. I appreciate it. I know it's hard to make these decisions and you want to please everyone, but definitely appreciate using all the funds, no matter what, however you do it. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. And what's your last name again?
D A H M. It's Dutch, Dom.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next is the review of the June 5th agenda. Everybody reviewed that? All right, then next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments?
Okay, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city manager mentioned that June is ride transit month, so there is a pledge that we can each take to ride transit five times this month. And so they're trying to encourage folks to do that. And I thought, I took the pledge, so, you know, no pressure, but I do think as we continue to talk about light rail coming and kind of the impacts to our community and how folks get around, I think it's a good opportunity for us to understand those systems in a way that will hopefully help guide some of those decisions in coming months and years. And so just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was the case, since it is now June 1st, so.
Only five times?
Only five times.
Okay. Community Transit is coming on Monday night, and that's another good time to bring things up with them because they're going to be talking about what they're going to be doing in Mount Lake Terrace on routes. But if we have routes that we know are lacking, we probably should bring it up. Rory, did you want to go?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And Erin, I just want you to know that I took my beloved Community Transit 413 twice today. So I haven't taken the pledge, but I hope I got a head start, yeah. You know, on a more serious note, you know, I've been getting emails and other, having other conversations out in, in community with, with neighbors who, with the projects that have been submitted for Town Center have raised some concerns. You know, I think that, you know, Mr. City Manager, you know, as, as we get a chance and as there's capacity or staff capacity, you know, the Town Center Subarea Plan is, you know, four years old at this point. We've been through a pandemic and we're seeing some projects probably near vesting under, under that language. And, you know, there were a lot of compromises and there was a lot of conversation back when, when that plan was being developed. But, you know, as we, as we approach, you know, shovels in the ground, you know, I think it's, it would be good for us as, as a council and, and as staff to think about what we're hearing from, from community while also having sort of a forward-looking perspective on what's, what's being built, what we want to see built. And in this new, new world, you know, post-pandemic, you know, and acknowledging that light rail's coming as well, making sure that, that we're having a conversation about, you know, the built environment in Town Center. I think to be more specific, you know, as I see projects being proposed, we're seeing, you know, large frontage projects that are a little bit, you know, are a little bit shocking. And I think these, these initial projects with the Town Center plan, we're always going to be a little bit jarring to, to see in our, in our Town Center. I think they, they are what, what we've been planning for. And also I think there's, there are opportunities to turn the dials on. And also, I think there's opportunities to turn the dials on projects that might have a lot of residential space but not, you know, not necessarily a lot of commercial space and also having conversations about the public amenities and the commercial space ratio or parking ratios. And, you know, other thing on my mind is about sort of the need for us to have a conversation about what we're seeing built, what, you know, I'm becoming a bit redundant here, but, you know, how do we, how do we give staff the tools to work with developers to achieve what, you know, our residents and we as sort of the elected leaders are thinking about? So I'll stop rambling at this point, but just wanted to reflect that, you know, I literally just responded to an email from someone raising concerns about projects and, you know, growth is hard and change is always a little bit scary, but I think there are actual needs to make sure that we're doing Town Center right. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Councilmember Ryan?
I'd be open to take that, those topics and have a discussion, amend, amendment, not, agenda item, excuse me, to talk about those. Maybe revisit our downtown projects, well, our zones that we voted on and just have a chat about some of those things regarding parking and commercial things. I'd be up for that.
I just, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and just, you know, to put a bit more of a personal, you know, to express my personal preferences here, I'm very supportive of the Town Center and the transit-oriented development that we are planning, but I think, you know, making sure that we're looking towards the future and also, you know, making sure we aren't just getting a bunch of boxes dropped on Town Center, I think is really important, the devils and the details. And I think we need, you know, spaces that we want to, you know, we want as, you know, people walking up and down the street and make sure that we'll have businesses we want to visit, et cetera, so.
I think one of the missed opportunities that we're starting to see is that we probably should have made it a little bit more clear that the first floor will be retail and especially along 236. All along 236 should be retail because that's where all the people are going to be getting off of light rail and walking into town. And then the back part of, back part of that looks into the park, and so that would be wonderful restaurant space. Also, I was just thinking about public space in buildings. If a developer wanted to do something special and it's, they can't do it, we can give them the ability to have public space in that building or in the courtyard and a restroom. And it'll be right next to light rail. And it's something that we didn't think of. It's right next to light rail. That whole development is going to be right next to light rail. And we just, we had several developers come and give us some really great ideas that they would like to have done, but the person that is actually going to be building it has 5,000 square feet of retail. So it's a missed opportunity that we just didn't see when we were planning. And I don't know what to do now because once it's built, it's built. And it's like all the other buildings that are in town right now that came in because we needed to have something go in. And that would be, and I love Vineyard Park because my dad was there and everything, but it's not retail on the first floor and it's in Town Center. So we've, we've backed away on a lot of things that we probably should not have in order to keep our Town Center the way the vision was, but it's, I don't know what to do. But hopefully we can start talking about diving into a little bit more about the zoning and what can go in. Isn't that something that we could do in the planning? Mayor for Tam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I remind us of the great opportunity we have to shape our community, including Town Center, with our comprehensive plan update?
Yes.
Which you're going to talk about a lot on Monday?
We will be covering that topic a little bit on Monday, and we'll be covering that topic a lot over the next year and a half. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me just say, thanks for leaving the blind up. I got a gorgeous view of Luna over there, and I'm holding you all hostage until I'm done. You can go see her yourself. I actually, seriously, wanted to revisit because I will just say, I think others have said this, it's never really clear when we pitch ideas, did it take, did it get root traction? What's the imagery here? So I wanted to bring back this idea of celebrating our residents, as we would say in my culture, giving them their flowers while they're with us. A resident, Kimberly Sloan, wanted to recommend Annie Nygaard. A lot going on with Annie, for those of you who are friends with her, I will leave it there, just to say that this would be a wonderful opportunity to acknowledge somebody who has been doing so much for this community and is still trying to do so much for this community in the capacities that they can. If you remember, I had mentioned Kermit Apio as an example. I think Councilmember Sonmore had some names as well of residents who would fit this profile. So just kind of wanted to keep that conversation moving forward, if not, get some action behind it. And again, just offering another awesome resident here in Mount Lake Terrace as we're talking about making this place beautiful. In my mind's eye, I just keep thinking about all the amazing people who are going to end up living in some of these spaces that we are sitting here, not arguing, having discussions around how to get them here and affordably get them here. So Annie Nygaard, potentially candidate for some type of recognition by the city formally.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. If there isn't anything else... Oh, I was going to mention, I was at the post office today and the first thing out of the person's mouth was, I hear the passport is, and City Hall has started again. They've already sent people here.
Madam Mayor, if I may, we also offer photos, so we can do the photos here as well.
And do the others have photos? Because I remember having to go someplace else for photos before Mount Lake Terrace started doing it.
I'm not sure, but I know they've been playing with the camera down here for the last several days to make sure they were ready for our opening today. So if the State Department rejects any passport photos, I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Did you have something that you wanted to say? I thought someone else raised their hand before I adjourned the meeting. All right, and I will adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you. Record.